Item two, discussion of school tax overlay district. Robert?
Yeah, so I think everybody understands exactly what the district is, right? The, you know, allowing the people outside and in a fair school feeder pattern to vote if we were to pass to allow them to vote on the referendum to tax people in the city as well as in the feeder pattern, three mills, additional three-mill property tax. So I'm not going to go over that too much. However, I've got the timeline that was issued by the school board up, and I emailed this to everybody. Just want to go through it so everybody understands. So the next thing that will need to happen in order for this to take place, we'll have to put it on the council agenda, a resolution, hold a vote, and if it passes in favor of allowing the referendum, then a petition of 200 qualified electors would have to be filled out. That would be a task of the EAC or any other volunteer that would, you know, care to help get those. But once we get those 200 signed petitions, it would be that as well as the resolution from the council would go to the school board. The school board at that time would look at it and make the decision of whether or not to push it on to the county commission. The county commission would look at it and say, yes, we agree with Fairhope's decision. So that's kind of the timeline that, so hypothetically, let's say we discuss it tonight, and y'all say, yes, let's put it on the agenda for next week to vote on it. There's two things we have to decide. One is the millage. The EAC has recommended, you know, the three mills is what the county has said is the max, the three-mill additional property tax. The, actually, there's three things. We've got to determine the millage, determine when the referendum will be held, which is a critical point for the simple fact that the school board's budgeting year starts October 1. So if the referendum is held before October 1, then the funds would start flowing into the schools of the 2020 school year. If we miss that September deadline to have the referendum and the vote is held sometime after October, November, December, then it's going to be 2021. So, you know, there's a, there is a little bit of a critical point there. October 1 would need to be ideally have the referendum before that. That way, the schools can get it, you know, a calendar year. And the third thing that we'd have to decide is the amount of time in which the special tax district is in place. That's up to the council. It can be up to 30 years. It can be two years. It can be 10, 15, 20, 30. So we'd have to discuss that and determine what we felt was good. EAC would like to see a 30-year for the long-range planning aspect. So...
When you say up to the council, the council, we would put that in the resolution we enter, and would that be part of what's ultimately voted on in the referendum? Or the referendum would just be pass it or don't, and then the timeline would still be determined by us? That's not part of the vote?
No, that's, no, that's not part of the vote. That's all decided in our, in our resolution next, next meeting. It would have referendum to be held on such and such date for a time period of 30 years, three mills. All that's decided, and then the referendum would just be on?
Yes or no.
Do y'all want to go over the suggestions that I sent to you, I think on February 16?
You can present them.
Okay. Let's see if they can get that presentation up. I did go over this in the EAC meetings, and I haven't had time to put all of the figures together, but I've learned a little bit more about the impact fees and how if the county were to impose an impact fee, especially for schools, we could also charge it, or a percentage of our 1% for schools as well. The only reason we can't do it right now is because we're county schools, and this is a city impact fee. So that's kind of when I started putting all of this together. The...
Can you put up the slide, please?
Okay. What I'm describing here, and it's just a lot of stats, but these are ideas that are more equitable to everyone concerned, especially the constituents, who right now are paying about what equals four mills that nobody else is paying. Okay. The benefits for this proposal is that no special election would be needed. It's not saying that we shouldn't do this. I believe this should be done first before, you know, kind of equal out what everyone's paying before a three-mill is considered that will be paid by all. So the benefits of this proposal is no special election needed or the expense for the election. It would be proportionately more fair, no additional cost to citizens. It's diversified funding. City options could be approved by a permanent ordinance. Almost 70% of the proposed funding in this plan requires just a council approval, and it's for 1.35 million. It does not prevent consideration for a tax overlay after the equitable sources have been in place first. Currently, Fairhope voters pay the highest municipal millage tax in the county. Fairhope voters pay a total of 43 mills. County, or outside the city limits, pays zero mills for the city, to the city, and 28 mills total. This is a map of our school feeder pattern. The dark green is the city limits, the airports to the side on the right, and the pink outline is the border of our feeder pattern. And as you can see, most of the area that makes up Fairhope feeder pattern is located outside the city limits. This is some data that I got right when I took office. I need to get the updated information. But these figures are, since 2009, the percentage of students outside the city limits has increased, while the percentage of students inside the city limits have decreased. City property taxes, which again are only paid by our constituents, is 15 mills, which equaled in 2018 $4,895,000. This makes up 19% of the total revenue in our budget. When you divide this by 15, that one mill equals 326,000. So that's increased since we last looked at it. City paid a conservative estimate of $1.18 million in expenses, services, and appropriation for our schools in 2018. In 2019, it's projected to spend $1.32 million. Five, approximately $530,000 of this total is paid for sports, an expense that Baldwin County Board of Education pays for all other schools. So essentially, this total equals just over four mills, an expense not being shared by all in the feeder pattern. How is it fair to ask municipal voters, then, to pay an additional three mills in a proposed overlay when they're already paying the equivalent of about four mills? And I'm actually getting more totals from departments, but I've put this together today. So it's, you know, these are very conservative numbers. Our city sales tax, it makes up about 39% of our revenue in the budget. And property tax, like I said, is 15. So almost half of the city revenue comes from two funding sources. 25% of the total sales tax was used to pay city debt, which will be paid off in June 2019. While we need, we have to have sales tax for our operating. Anything that we appropriate for sales tax before now would have been, you know, we would have to steal utility profits to make up that difference for government services. So the sales tax, like I said, it's a huge, it's the biggest income that we have, and it absolutely is needed for us to operate and be self-sustaining. What I'm proposing is, now that the debt will be paid off in June, having 10% of sales tax go to schools. Equitable funding opportunities for our schools, and this is besides the sales tax, which would be approximately $900,000. Again, this is a conservative amount. And as far as things being stable, this sales tax has steadily risen every single year. And what it doesn't include now is that online sales taxes are now going to, that amount's going to increase substantially because a lot more online stores are having to file that easy user tax for the state of Alabama. So that's going to substantially increase. The other is the $530,000 reimbursement from Baldwin County Board of Education. Now, I know this has been discussed, and I know, Jack, you've tried very hard to get this reimbursed. But it's all about letting our community know that this is something that we do, because I don't know that that many people do know about it. And it's really about strength in numbers and knowing that the only fair thing to do is that we get reimbursed for these, as they do pay this for every other city, every other school. Okay. Out of our utilities, the only utility that makes sense right now, besides gas, and I didn't look at gas right now, because anyway, it's, I'm still looking at the infrastructure and how that would affect, you know, their profits. But water is something that most everybody in our feeder pattern uses, and we can easily afford $100,000 a year for this, probably more. Again, I'm just trying to do very conservative numbers on this. Okay, impact fees, and I'm just trying to explain this. Right now, the city has impact fees, and it goes to fire, police, parks and wrecks, and then transportation and streets. And this is how that 1% is distributed among those categories. And the last three years, the city has collected around $1 million a year in impact fees, and this includes a nine-month moratorium in 2000, actually, it's 2017, and I have up there 2018. So if the county were to impose a county impact fee for schools, then part of this percentage that we're now collecting could go to schools. I don't know what that percentage would be, but a new study would have to be done. But I think that the county and the Baldwin County Board of Education, the timing's right to push this forward. We all know that as the fastest-growing county in the state and the 13th ranked nationally, that now is the time to make the, you know, developers and people pay who are coming here. They are the true impact on these schools. If the county, and this is going again, county impact fee, just going over again. I put this online if people want to read it, but this is just, again, saying that, you know, if they did the impact fee for the county, the only cities and schools this would impact are the fastest-growing schools. It wouldn't have much impact, if any, on the majority of the schools in our county. And then the three cities that already impose a city impact fee would also be able to include a portion for schools. Okay. This is kind of everything in one page, the conservative estimates for each funding source. The first one, and then on the right, is the approval, who would approve this. But the reimbursement for city, to the city for school sports, this has to be talked about in a serious way. And with all of our, you know, constituents understanding that this is something that only Fairhope pays, I do think that we can get this done. The $100,000 I put in for impact fee is very conservative. The use of the water utility profits, 10% sales tax, that all equals 1.6 million. And then continue the city appropriation of 350,000, and it's close to $2 million. What I wanted to mention here, just as a side, sales tax is a user tax that comes mostly from people spending money that live outside the city limits. That's where most of our funding goes. Discussing at all right now lowering our sales tax, it just would absolutely not make sense because this is what is keeping the city afloat and not having to use utility subsidy. We were, we're always going to need this sales tax income because the profit center is our utilities. We want the profits to pay for the infrastructure, maintenance. And if there's money left over and we decide to do a percentage of profits for utilities, that needs to go to economic and community development, not paying government expenses. And also, because the sales tax is generated from people outside the city limits, the burden to make that difference up, if it didn't come from utilities, would lay directly on the backs of our constituents. So it's just, it would be a disaster. So those are, those are my notes, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Comments, council?
Yeah, I'd like, and mayor, I've, you know, I've sent you some of these earlier. I actually think the sales tax, using 10% of sales tax, since we're not currently using it for debt reduction, i- is not a bad idea to fund the schools. Problem that I have, or that I foresee with, with most of this, and I want to point out, and then one of the first slides, you said permanent ordinance. I don't think any ordinance that we enter is permanent. It can always be changed by the next council or whenever that occurs.
Which is why I pointed out that the debt reduction was in place for three terms.
Right. But I mean, the problem, the worry about that is, is that it's never, you can never count on that because it can always be changed, whereas a three-mill tax would be voted in. If, if it was voted in, it would be for a finite period of time that you can budget, budget for.
That's why I said I'm for the vote. I just think this needs to be done first, not in replacing the consideration for three mills. Having this done first makes it more equitable for everybody. Our voters are the ones who are disproportionately taxed right now for supporting our schools. Until that's fixed, it's not fair to do a three-mill. All I'm saying is, this is not replacing.
Sure.
It's saying this comes first.
Right. And, but the other issue that I see with that, I'm not saying I disagree with any of it. I mean, I'd love for Baldwin County to reimburse us that. And I would, and I think adding, or sort of rearranging the sales tax by ordinance is not a bad plan, and I'd actually be in favor of that. But, but I think the issue with some of this is that most of what you're proposing is outside of our control, our control. I mean, you know, getting the county to impose a, an impact fee, I mean, we can proposition them all we want, but if that, if that's not what they feel strongly about, then they're not going to do it.
70% of the money, which is 1.35 million, is a council vote.
Sure, sure. But that's the, I mean, a million of that is the sales tax almost, 900,000 of that.
Yeah, all I'm saying on that part is that most of it is a council approval. And I think that the county commission, and definitely the schools, when you really look at this, this would only be an impact for schools. I definitely think that's very reasonable.
Sure.
And very sellable.
And again, I think I'm agreeing with you on all this. I mean, I'm in favor of the 10%. I'm in favor of getting reimbursed from Baldwin County. Now, I guess, obviously, for those of you that don't know, the difference, and the reason why it's set up the way it is, is because we own all of our own facilities. Whereas most schools, they have their own property, and they're county-owned, which is why the county reimburses them, and we don't get it because we actually own our own facilities. Is that fair?
That's fair to say. I think at one time, though, it was set up that when we built those facilities, they were going to rent those facilities from us and pay utilities on facilities. And then, you know, some of the deals have been done over the years that they got out of paying any rents on those facilities or paying for any utilities or any upkeep. I mean, we got a whole staff of employees that are...
Right. That's the main expenses. We have a lot that just goes for that, and it's only used for city, I mean, for the schools.
And I guess that would be my other question is, as far as, you know, discussing this from a budgetary standpoint, from what the money we get from the Board of Education is, you know, are these other schools getting that? You know, are we all getting sort of different pools of money, and they are being forced to use their reimbursement for upkeep on those fields and facilities? And then we're getting that money that's going to the school, and the school gets to use it for whatever, since they don't have to use it for reimbursement because the city is paying for that? Does that make sense? Do we know that?
I don't know.
We can find out, but, yeah.
Like Foley, Foley owns their stadium. They keep up their stadium, and they provide that. And I think there may be another school or so that does provide that. But I'll be honest, I've, I've lobbied to try to get them to pay their fair share on that, but I think it's a fat chance. If I thought they were going to give us 530,000 a year, they would have given us the K-1 Center.
Right. Well, I mean, but do you see my point, though? I mean, if we're getting, you know, and I'm just using fake numbers here, so don't anybody quote these, but I mean, if they're, if they're giving Daphne, you know, a million dollars, and Fairhope a million dollars, and Daphne has to use, including that as reimbursement for those facilities, and they have to use that for upkeep, Fairhope, that billion just goes to the school, and they don't have to pay for upkeep. It's, I mean, the city is really, that's another way that the city is supplementing our schools since we pay for that upkeep.
Absolutely. And we built it, too.
And I mean, I don't know those figures, but I mean, that'd be at least worth noting in this conversation.
This is not taking into account that Baldwin County Board of Education built all of these parks, too. I mean, all of these stadiums and so forth.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, all we're talking about is just getting reimbursed on the services. You know, we've always paid for it, and we built it, and it's not just the football, but others.
Yeah, and again, let me be clear in this. I mean, I do think the sales tax, at least reallocating 10% of it is not, is not a bad thing to do for the schools. Again, you know, it can always be undone by the next group that comes in. It's a short, it's sort of a short-term solution. And if the county is willing to impose that tax, and we can collect our portion of that, I think that's great. But again, that's, that's their call.
With something like this, it doesn't make sense to do this after the three-mill because it's like they have their money. I think if you do this, it's not costing anybody any money, citizens. So whatever we can get in place first, then if everybody still wants to do the three-mill, you would still do it.
That's what can get in place first. This, this could be done and implemented in 2020. It's in, see if we can get so-and-so to agree or get so-and-so to agree.
Well, I think the sales tax could be done...
Tomorrow.
Yeah, very quickly.
But, but it goes back to the school board.
100% opposed to that. If that's keeping the city afloat, we're going to flippantly use 10% of it for schools when I just heard you say that the sales tax is keeping the city afloat.
Yeah, but this would be a portion that we've already allocated by ordinance for other things. You know, it's, it's the...
It's going to take away from something.
Well, right now, it's going to debt service, which is going to be paid off.
Well, a portion of it until June.
And that's not, and it has also been diverted to the general fund to operate the general fund in years in which we couldn't retire debt. We didn't take utility transfers. We allowed utilities to pay its debt off one year. So it hasn't always been used for that. It's been, we've rated it a couple of times, and I know of it, the past six years, and diverted it from debt. One was last year. Didn't, we didn't have a debt reduction last year. We didn't have a big $2 million debt reduction payment. We used it for operating expenses. So I think that before we dismiss it and say we don't rely on it, something's going without if we divert it from...
The only reason I mentioned...
...the whole thing is not a debt was to be able to provide more and more services. And I'm just going to say, I think the, I want to get out of the school business. I want, I mean, I want the people to decide. I don't know of a fairer way. You said it's not fair, but if the citizens voted in, that's about the fairest way you can be. It's a democratic way.
Look, a vote is a vote. I can't support it, though, until we make it better for our constituents because they are the ones and the only ones contributing to bettering our schools right now. Nobody else is...
They'll get a $350,000 bonus, and we won't be making that appropriation anymore.
I was saying, we could still do that. But most of this, the four, the four mills is the over million dollars that we're paying. The only people paying that are the people, our voters.
But the three-mill would apply to everybody in the feeder pattern, not just the city limits. Right?
Correct.
So this, this would be a way to...
So all those people outside the city.
Equitably distribute people there.
All these people outside the city are going to start paying three more mil.
Right. But so would the people inside the city.
Right.
And if they're already paying four, they're paying seven now.
Right, but they're choosing to pay three, three more at that point.
If we take 1.35 million out of our budget and use it for the schools, are we not subsidizing the people outside the city limits then as well?
No, because what I'm telling, these are all, you know, the user tax for sales tax is being paid by everybody. I'm trying to eliminate things that our voters are paying that no one else is paying. Everything that I'm proposing right now is true impact. Sales tax is a user tax. It's paid mostly by those shopping outside our city. So that's fair. Water is, everybody's using water, and our, most everybody in our feeder pattern. So I'm coming up with ways that are just not about the constituents.
But you did, you did just say utilities, if money is left over, needs to go to economic development.
I said overall utilities. I'm only talking about water right now. $100,000.
Well...
I mean, it's not much, it's a percentage of all profits.
I want to be clear that this is not something I'm bringing forward. This is coming from the EAC and about three different committees that have been working on getting this special tax district. It has now been delivered in paper from the county. The principals are ecstatic about the opportunities this will provide for their schools so they can get out of the fundraising business and focus on career development and for the teachers and the kids. So there's a lot of excitement about this within the education community, that what this will do.
And we can still do that. I just would like to do this first.
I support putting it to a referendum and letting the people decide. I mean, I don't know of a fairer way.
Yeah.
If they don't like it, don't vote for it. If they like it, vote for it.
I think we'd have a better chance, too, to win the vote, knowing that, you know, we're still doing a lot. And I think, too, after you put this in place, and this is around $2 million, honestly, at that point, I mean, there will come a time when county schools don't make sense for us. And that's when I think you look at the three, you know, whatever the millage is, and say, what do we need to make these schools number one? The number-one schools in the state are city schools. Our Fairhope High School is number three as a county school, but it's number 20 when you put everybody together because city schools are ahead of that. If we're truly wanting to think about long-term, and I'm not saying this happens overnight, put the funding in place that we can do, and it will not hurt anything because it's well-diversified and coming from lots of different sources. And then, down the road, let's look at what do we need to make it possibly self-sustaining as a city school? You can't do that with this proposal, really, because you've got to study that and figure out the money that's needed after that, so...
We're running short on time, council. If we're going to, if, as Councilman Brown proposes, get this on the next agenda, we got to decide whether or not we want it on an agenda, and if so, in what form.
Like I said, the EAC is recommending the three mills in 30 years. And then the referendum date can be set sometime before October. We can look into that before the next meeting and...
But I mean, that's, but getting a date for the referendum is not necessarily in our control if we have to issue, pass a resolution and then send it to the, to the school board and get it to the county.
In that timeline, it tells you, you know, one to two months to get, allow the school board, and one to two months to allow the county commission. So there's a little bit of a time constraint there, so...
So if you were going with a, they need to have the vote prior to October 1st. So that would be, say, you know, September, then you back off, let's, let's say that's a month, two, three months, plus two...
We're right at it.
Five, seven months. I mean, you, you're right on top of it. So that's the... So that's the, I guess that's the, um, the issue is that, because I, I like the idea of looking at the sales tax too. But the three mills is something that EAC and everyone is on board with because of it's a little more stable. And the problem is that from a timing perspective.
And the county's going to look at, the county's going to look at 10% set, or any kind of ordinance we pass or impact fee from the county or whatever. It's the same thing we're doing now, just more money they're going to have to figure out how to shuffle with. It's not, they can't long-term budget because in that, like you said, the next council comes in and says, no, we think that 10% needs to go to X instead of the schools. And then, you know, teachers are losing jobs. If the referendum is put in place for the three-mill tax district, they can long-range plan.
Like I said, a- all I'm saying is to do this first. I'm not opposed to, to the other. I'm saying, is, is there an issue that y'all have in, in putting these things in place? Just the ones that are council-driven?
I don't have an issue.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not for any of those.
I might be for, uh, might be in favor of the sales tax. I'd, I'd be willing to at least investigate that and the, uh, either, either or that or the utility profits. I think, um, and of course, I would love to be reimbursed, but I don't know that that'll happen.
This is just for the council.
Impact fee's a long shot.
And to take any one of those two away and not put it back into the city is still taking something away from taxpayers. I care how you spend it. It's either buying park or upgrading some facility or something within the city.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were saying.
If you take 10% of the sales tax and you take so much from utilities, you're somehow, you're still shorting the, the citizens of Fairhope by taking that money and not putting it back in the city of Fairhope. You're still helping kids outside the, the city.
You're saying you're taking taxpayer money and using it for the schools?
That's right.
And, and the, the people in the city pay the most of that.
That's right.
That money anyway.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying is, you do this and then you're taking that million, you're, you're reducing the amount that the people inside the city limits are paying if we look at all of this. I mean, all I'm saying is, it's just where, all of this is worth looking into. And maybe it can happen before, um, the vote.
What did we say the ratio was? Did you have that figure up there as far as what? How much, how mu, what percent people in the city pay versus, of the overall amount versus what people outside of the city pay?
I don't know if you would be able to track that if you're talking about on sales tax.
I'm talking about just in general funding, just general revenue.
That one, that one right there?
It's down a couple of, uh.
The 15 mills extra?
It's, it's, that's right here. He wanted to see this real quick.
So is the money that, the revenue that the city of Fairhope gets? I, I'm just looking.
Fifteen.
Okay, so, so somebody calculate that for me, Jimmy?
It's, well, it was almost 5 million last year.
It's 4.9, 4.895.
Right, so, so I'm just saying, I was just thinking, out of that, say we take 900,000 of sales tax money, how much of that is coming from people inside the city?
There's no way to track that. Sa- sales tax money.
Nobody pays city property tax except people who live inside the city.
No, no, I'm talking about this.
You can't track that because people from out of town.
Oh, yeah, sales tax is a user tax and like I said.
But a lot of that money is coming from people that don't even live in the state of Alabama.
You wanted me to go up?
But, but it's still incoming to the city that wants to go to something.
Right.
Did you want, what did you want to see, Jimmy?
No, 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 that, that was, that was it.
Okay, but I thought you said you wanted to see something.
Oh, yeah, 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 I do. Go back to the, we had the student, student.
Oh, right there?
That right there, yeah.
And I need to get that updated.
Total was 50, 30, 24, 48.
But that's from, we need, we need updated.
All those people that live outside the city, if they don't come in the city of Fairhope and buy anything or build anything to pay an impact fee, they're not getting, paying anything anyway.
I know, but that's what you're saying with property taxes too. These are people who have already been paying property taxes. Some people have been here 50 years. The true impact on schools is new development and people moving in. Those are the people, you know, if, if they're remodeling and that's where the impact fee comes in. And like I said, the sales tax is something everybody pays. I'm trying to think of ways that we're not taxing voters more than everybody else. And that's exactly what you're doing if you're proposing a three-mill because they're already paying close to four mills based on this.
I disagree, but all I'm saying is, we're not proposing the tax. We're proposing, proposing to put it to a referendum to decide whether or not they want it.
I just, it's, it's a communication thing. Once this is out, I think people in, inside the city limits, even if they want more funding for schools, they're going to say, yes, I'd rather do that first. So it's a little bit more fair for us since we're paying more. You know, it's going to be hard to ask our voters to pay an additional, even if we're, all we're doing is saying, we're putting it to a vote. Communication-wise, if they're already paying four mills over what everybody else is paying for, the three-mill overlay does, is not fair until you even the playing field.
Is there, is there supposed to be, and I, and I mean, maybe somebody smarter than me can explain this, is there supposed to be some tangible benefit to paying that four-mill extra? I mean, is there something that comes along with that?
You live in the city and you get.
There's no benefit. It's an expense to them that they're paying that nobody else is contributing to and.
I'm sure your property's worth more if you live in the city.
This has nothing to, you're, you're fif, you're paying 15 mills. You're paying more than any other city in the county, okay? And of that 15 mills, 4% of that mills is paying in services, expense, appropriation. And we've been doing that, okay? There's no benefit to our voters to have a three-mill until we even the playing field and make this more contribution that everybody is paying into.
Yeah, I mean, I, I follow the, I follow the sales tax and, and the, and the utility chip in. I mean, I, I understand and I, I, I'm not opposed to that. I think, I think we ought to look at, look at both options. But the problem now is that the EAC timeline is, uh, such that if you're going to have it where, where it's in effect for 2020, you've pretty much got to make a decision and start moving right now from a, from a timing perspective, but.
Unfortunately, that's when we got this document.
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing is, you know, I mean, when you put this up for vote, there's, there's no, there's no guarantee which way, which way it goes. And, and even some of the things you're proposing, Mayor, I mean, with the county and those things, will, will, will take some time. So it may be that in the event this doesn't pass, the three-mill doesn't pass, that these are some things that we can come back to that, that we can start now or start looking into now and getting traction on so that if we get down to the, whatever the election date is and it doesn't pass, we have made ground on some of these other things, either with Bowlin County Board of Education, the county commission, and those sort of things that we'll know, and we'll have kind of, you know, we don't, we don't wait on, sit on one while we wait on the other. We kind of.
And, and like I said, this has a, a better chance of passing a three-mill, a better chance of passing for the voters inside the city limits once this is in place and they're not paying more than everybody else. That's all I'm saying. If we want this to succeed, which I want to, to succeed too, you're, we're still asking the people inside the city limits to pay more.
Yep, I am.
Okay, and you forget who you, you work for, I guess.
I'm working for the principals at the schools is who I'm working for.
Well, I work for the voters and I'm going to figure out more funding for the schools. So.
Right, final, final time, Council. Any, any last comment, Jimmy?
Um, just, I mean, I see, I see the benefit to, to both. Obviously, the, the three-mill is something more stable they can count on, but this is an alternative that would, um, would, would help fund things prior to that being implemented or in the event that that didn't get implemented.
I'm just absolutely shocked. I would raid, I would raid the sales tax. If we finally get out of debt, we're going to take every bit of it and spend it.
We're not going to take every bit of it.
I mean, I wouldn't take every bit of it.
Absolutely shocked at that.
I, I mean, I personally don't see this taking every bit of it. I mean, it's, we're talking about, you know, right now we're allocating 25%. This would be taking, you know, less than half of that 25% for schools. So I mean, I, I don't see that as taking every bit of it because I think, I see it as taking 40% of it.
Well, and then you add the 350.
Forty percent of the one-half, so even less than that.
You could do without the 350 if you, I mean, if you're putting in, if you're upping it to a million.
It's 1.35 basically from, from wherever you, whatever.
Right, but 350 is already in there allocated and that's part of the deal for the K-1 centers. And that, that's, that's in there regardless.
That's in there.
For a couple of years, yeah. Um, and so, I mean, to change that from 350 to say a million, I mean, you're talking about another set. I mean, I'm not saying, I, I personally think the way to do this is to pursue the three-mill tax. Let them vote. By also, you know, work, you know, work this other side on the things that we can, that we don't have control over through the county.
Well, from a fairness perspective.
Working on it and then, and then kind of.
But you want that vote to be successful.
Sure I do.
From a fairness perspective, there really isn't anything more fair than putting it out on a referendum and letting the citizens decide for themselves.
Well, I mean, and then that's the thing, the, the, the fact that the, the.
I mean, they all get a vote.
Right, the, the fact that people in the city pay more millage is not going to change. I mean, they're, they're always going to pay that four-mill more in the city.
No, won't.
It's just, so we're going to eliminate the four-mills?
No, but I mean, uh, part of that is also taking, you know, all of this needs to be worked on. I'm, I mean, you would be taking, um, some of this off. I can, I can bring up what they're.
If you were in favor of all of it, both things, then if the city, let's say that we did fund everything that you wanted in, we got it from the county, we got impact fees and they reimburse us for the uses and then we still pursue this, it's still three and three.
That's what I'm saying.
That doesn't change.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, no matter what happens, the people in the city limits are paying four-mill more than the people outside the city.
Right.
No matter how you slice it.
That's right.
It's never going to change.
All I'm saying is, is that we're putting in more equitable ways first. That we wouldn't have to wait at all. This could, you could vote and say this happens in 2020 or starts in 2020.
But I, I, the, the sales tax, I know that might be coming from people other than these Fairhope residents, but it's still the people.
But everybody pays, everybody pays sales tax.
Well, it's why we pay all the money for the flowers and the beautification and the, everything else is to get that. And, and, and so you're spending that, you're going to be spending it for people outside the feeder pattern regardless. So I'd say.
And I mean, there is some risk in using the sales tax. If there's, if there's a pullback, what do you cut?
Sales tax has never historically been good for long-term funding.
Well, because what do you have to cut? I mean, if you have to trim the budget, I, I still.
Like I said, the online, there's, and I, I've tried to get all this information before this, you know, meeting, but it is going to be substantially increasing. So there's, you know, I, I think it's going to be staple because that alone is something we've never had income. And the only income online that we're getting right now is from Amazon and like one other place. And now it's going to apply to anybody who sells online.
That'd be nice, I mean, that.
So that's, that will be a significant increase too. That's not in this.
Right, but there might be, and, and I, and I think that's great, but the, there's stability, there may be stability in the fact that revenue is coming in, but the stability of the schools being able to count on that as an ordinance is not there, I guess, is the issue with that.
That's why I kept on saying, this is not either or. It's saying this first and then that, and it's a lot more sellable, that's all. I can get behind it after something, after we do this, so.
So I, I mean, what I was looking for the answer is whether you want to, want to put a resolution on the next agenda or not. And I'm not, I'm not getting Robert's yes and I, I, I want to put it on there, but I'm not. You want to put it on the next agenda?
I mean, I, I think from a timing perspective, we've, we've got to do that. I'm not opposed to these other alternatives too though, so. But let's, let's put it on there, let the citizens vote.
Let the people vote.
Three-mill? Three, Jimmy?
Yeah, I'll do three.
And then, uh, date and then, and then duration?
Date.
To have it, we have to set it, so.
Do we, do we have, uh, I mean, it'd be nice to.
I don't know, that'd be at least, I mean, is there some kind of guideline as far as Tuesday of the month or?
It's first Tuesday usually, right?
Oh, and one thing I did want to touch on, the, the county school board said they would pay for the special election and then take that, the funds for the special election out of the first year three-millage that was collected. So there's no.
So if it didn't pass, then they just eat it?
I didn't ask that question because it's going to pass.
They're going to pay for it, but then they're going to pay themselves back for it if it passes.
Yep.
What date, talking September?
I mean, I think otherwise, yeah.
August?
No, I think, well.
September.
If you can sync it up with another election, that'd be ideal, but.
First Tuesday in September?
Is there, well, yeah, well, I mean, can we not look at that from between now and the next meeting to figure out if there's another election that we can piggyback on?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But that's a sure way to make it, kill it then.
To put, put it with another election.
Any special referendum added to a general election statistically fails, so.
I look at as a way to make sure you get maximum voter turnout.
I'm just telling you the statistics.
We can figure the date out in between, before the next meeting.
But it is necessary to try to do it prior to October 1st.